Okay, at this time I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Board for July 1st, 2013. Thank you all for being here. If everybody could silence their cellphones, that would be great. And may I have a motion to call the meeting to order?
I'll make the motion to start the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is the Sillerman Residential Tennis Court. And at the request of the applicant, they have requested they would like to adjourn this matter for all purposes until our July 29th meeting.
So moved. So moved?
So moved.
Yes.
Second?
Second?
Second.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
In the public hearing, we have Southampton Hospital.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, Noche Marcin, for the applicant Southampton Hospital. I just submitted an affidavit, a post-it, and an affidavit, a mailing. This board, I believe, very familiar with the application. This is for the expansion of the operating room. You previously reviewed this under secret and in advisory capacity with the zoning board. Happy to report the zoning board granted the necessary lot area variance last Thursday evening. And prior to that, the architectural review board also reviewed the application and they granted their approval. So the last step is the site plan review. And if you have any questions, I can try to go through them, but I think you've at least looked at all, everything. The latest plan revised the parking lot to accommodate the extra spaces. We did relocate the proposed generators now into that loading area, so the necessity for any additional screening or otherwise, I don't believe, is necessary. I think that was all taken into account when you reviewed it, secret determination.
I think at the last meeting we had saw a notice from the fire department that they were all okay with--
Yes, I think there was some internal discussions about that. And as far as the fire marshal and all the issues related, internal issues have been resolved with the building department.
Didn't we have, I think we had a letter at the work session?
There is a letter that the zoning board specifically asked for. That came from the fire marshal and the building inspector. So any of their issues will be incorporated into the actual building permit plans.
Kathy?
I have nothing to add. The site plan is all, everything's been worked out.
Any questions?
No.
So, but we would have a public meeting on this, or we would just--
Close the public hearing for all--
Do you have--
Unless somebody wants to speak now.
Would anybody have any comment to make upon this application?
So close the public hearing and adjourn it for decision, for written decision.
May I have a motion to close the hearing?
In any way, we give you a decision subject to council writing it up, just so we know it's done.
I need to review documents and files, Wayne, so what would, I don't know where the decision get, you can plan on the fact that it will be approved.
But it's not over, it's not available for another month, then.
Well, when's the next meeting? The work session is--
July 29th.
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 Essentially another month. It really puts us in a bind.
Well, that was a bind a month ago when nobody showed up for the public hearing.
Well, it wasn't really until we had the variance, though. But the issue was you couldn't have acted without that.
Well, so wait a minute. The technicality was you needed a written decision from the zoning board, but you don't need one from the planning board. I mean, I need time to write this up, and the board needs now, what is your suggestion, that it be approved now, subject to written decision?
Correct.
I'm okay with that. I mean, we looked at the whole thing, so if you can, if you are okay with that--
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying you need to do it tonight.
All right. All right, that's appropriate, then. Motion to approve the application of Southampton Hospital for a site plan approval to expand a existing building and for two generator enclosures. Approved in general, subject to the-- subject to a written decision by council, but said decision not to affect, said, written decision not to affect the overall approval this evening.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Subdivision Review, OIA associates, even though the earth moved and they approved, they got our health department approval, they have requested an adjournment for one more month, so--
I'll make a motion that the owner's request to adjourn OIA associates until the July 29th meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
In site plan review--
Still working on the HAVAD, so if you could adjourn that for a month, for all purposes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the HAVAD for all purposes to the July 29th meeting.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello, CIOTO and Roller.
For the applicant David Gil Martin Jr., foul, Fritz 2488, Montauk Highway Bridge Hampton, since the time we were last before you formally, we've made some significant changes to the plan, and I'll ask the architect Charles Kuhn to come up and explain the changes that we've made. We've submitted two sets of plans, one for the work session, and then another set, actually this afternoon, which were amended. And Mr. Kuhn will run through all the changes for you.
Are the plans the same?
There were changes that were requested, the work sessions, that we updated the plans based on--
They're not the same.
Charles Kuhn, architect, P.O. Box 641, Northport, New York.
There really weren't any changes per se to the plan. We submitted the plan last week showing just the existing building being retained without any additions. We also reduced the parking to 15 parking. And what the board had asked me to do was to bring tonight the health department submitted plans, as well as the county DOT plans, which, that's what you received tonight. That along with a full set of engineered site plans, which includes the site plan, landscape plan, and lighting plan. So again, there weren't really changes to the plan from last week, just more coordination between the plans.
Did we get a lighting plan?
Pardon me?
A lighting plan?
There is a lighting plan, yes.
What was attached to the health department?
No, 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 it should be, there are three sheets, ST 1, 2, 3 in a package, and ST 3 is the lighting plan.
Okay, got it. Yeah, the, it's just a little confusing because each pack starts with ST 1, so I've got three sets of ST 1, three sets of ST 2.
Well, because they're, they're, you requested the packages from the different departments, and I call them ST 1s.
Okay, great, so I see ST 3.
Unfortunately, the engineer, Jim Sharkey, for the filtration system, was not able to be here tonight, he's on a flight, so I really can't answer any questions with respect to the filtration system. The, I do have a revised floor plan with me tonight, I'd be more than happy to give you it. Again, the, the number of machines did not change, we're still, let me, let me grab the plan.
This is one, two.
The biggest change to the plan, other than not putting the addition on, was eliminating the dry cleaner facility, but we, our machine count is still at 100, which is 48 washers and 52 dryers.
All right. Yeah, if you have those to give us, you may as well, we can log them in.
Now, these are new.
Those are new, yes. These are--
Nine on this portfolio?
Five, six, seven.
Kathy, what's the, did you check this parking calculations? There are no calculations, it just says--
The parking--
Provided a required of 15.
The parking was set by the zoning board variance that was ultimately granted for the property, it was 15 spaces.
Okay, great. I got extras here.
You do?
We need one down.
So we went, so we went from two uses back down to a single use?
Right, single use.
Okay. And then if you could add to this plan, the, where the area 1 and area 2 for drainage is?
I did label them, but if you want me to, if you want me to identify them--
Well, just for Aldo to check the calculations, you need to know--
Okay, so I'll put a division line--
Just a line that says, this half is 1, that half's 2.
Yes.
And do you know whether or not they've submitted to health?
We have a submission to the health department, they have not seen the revised plan. Based on the old plan with the addition, we have gotten comments back, and basically they're just waiting for final secret determination and some fees.
Okay. Because really, I think, just to keep going forward, what we need to know is that these two process tanks and these two great water sediment tanks that you're showing on here is actually the size and number of what they're going to be.
The, the illustration on these plans reflect what was on the engineered plans that was submitted to the health department and DOT. Unfortunately, again, the engineer's not here tonight to really respond further to that. Similar to the health department, plans have been submitted to Suffolk County DOT, which, depending on where we go with this, I'll be resubmitting based on the new design.
So the new design has not been submitted to the DOT?
Not been submitted to health department or DOT, but in both, basically we've reduced the intensity of the application. The prior applications seem to be fine with both departments, so I don't see any problems moving forward with each department.
You mean Suffolk County DPW, the roadway?
That's right.
I think you guys need to take a look at landscaping and lighting and--
Sorry? New York State, DEZ, or? DEZ. Again, the engineers, Jim Sharkey is dealing with them, I've not had any involvement--
Have any plans been submitted?
They have, yes. Jim Sharkey has gone back and forth with them quite a few times. I believe he's pretty close on approval, but I did speak to him today, he doesn't feel that the reduction of the size of the building, this will not change in the machine count, will not affect his calculations, so, but obviously we do have to resubmit for this thing.
So we have to make sure that his plans are consistent with your plans as well?
Absolutely.
I think at this point, we at least have some data here that we can look at.
I'd like to see the whole thing packaged together and submitted, which, you know, we're still getting pieces of this and pieces of that.
Well, no, no, you have, you have complete, you have the packages of each department, health department, DPW, and, and your package.
Well, the layout, you just submitted the layout of the interior of the building tonight.
We did, yes.
So that's not, we did not have that earlier.
Yeah, and I would like to see Mr. Sharkey's hand as well. One of the, one of the questions that came up when we were looking at secret, and this, and this appears to be a type 2 action under secret now, I don't have a, can't say for sure, but it's no expansion to the building, so the public, public water supply well that's in the vicinity is something that we had asked, what we were going to ask the environmental analysts to look at, so I don't know.
Yeah, have you approached the Water Authority at all? The discharge from this facility--
Okay, I, again--
Is it within the caption area of the well?
I know as part of the engineering and submission of Jim Sharkey's package, I believe he has, but again, he's not here to respond.
So I just wanted to hear him?
No, but there are models around that indicate what the caption area would be for discharges to each of their wells, so I'd like to know if this area is going to have an effect or not an effect on the public water.
I know Jim Sharkey has had extensive submissions to DEC, I'm sure.
I think that's the Water Authority as well.
Again, Jim Sharkey would have to really address those questions.
So to move forward, we need to get him here.
Unfortunately, he had a flight, but--
I mean, to move forward, I think we have to schedule a public hearing, and we have Mr. Sharkey at the next public hearing, so if the board would schedule that, then we can post it and do what we have to do and have the official public hearing. We have never had that in this application before. And I think you have enough information to do that.
I think, I think we should at least get going on it, but, but I--
I agree.
But I think that at your own risk, if your health department changes, or your DOT changes, then, and the plans change significantly, then we might have to do another one. So you might have a public hearing that we might not be able to close if we don't, if we don't have information that is meshing together, that's all, but--
My understanding is we were close on the old plan, and now we're reducing the intensity of it, so I don't think--
Right.
--we're going to have some issues going forward, but we got to start someplace.
I agree.
We could schedule it, and we'll come back, we'll bring Mr. Sharkey, and make sure he's at the next public hearing.
I agree, Ed, but I think it makes sense for you to bring the expert with you, and to make sure that at least you got some comments back from DOT and from health department that says, this is the direction that we're heading, so that we don't go looking at it, then it changes, then we come back, and then we can't close the public hearing, that's all, you know?
I mean, health department's just waiting on the secret, which the board is the one that would sign, which I agree, it's type 2.
So Kathy and Aldo, do you feel the application is complete enough to go forward to the public hearing? Would you like to see more information?
Let's say for the sake of argument, DTC says we want more storage tanks, or we want more leachings to serve. It's just like a price up, whether you get an addition, leaching, or a larger, enlarged tank, you start affecting the sanitary system, you may be starting to affect the, the stonewater handling capacity, so those are the coordination that I think they have to take a better look at, to see that all the agencies agree that this is their final plan, and it's not interfering on whatever the next agency wants in terms of the expansion, health department wants expansion of the sanitary system, exactly interfering with the treatment of the facility, et cetera. So those are the things that are going through my mind, that worry me a bit.
Do you have any feedback from the health department saying, this is looking good, we're waiting for secret?
Yes.
So maybe we can get a copy of that, that just clears that, at least that one point up.
What about DEC?
Yeah, I don't know.
Sharkey knows where we are with DEC, but my conversations with him, which, you know, predated our secret dispute, if you will, were that we were very close with all of the other agencies, and this was the last one to come in, and I'll have him at the next hearing, we'll give him enough warning now to come.
Right.
And he'll, and he'll explain to you where we are in that, and if, if you require holding the public hearing over, then you do it, but, you know, waiting for other agencies, waiting for this agency, we're just going to keep rolling along, and again, we're a contract vendee. The people that own it are getting--
Right.
--really anxious.
Want to do it for August?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should schedule it.
Oh?
I didn't hear your question.
Should we do a public hearing in August?
The only thing I can think of, Dave, is that if you want to insist on it, I don't see any legal impediment to it, it's just that these plans have been submitted this evening, I don't know whether the applicant is better advised to let Kathy and Aldo review the plans, to try and find out what, if anything, in there might need to be changed, or altered, or addressed pursuant to their review, before you get into the public hearing, or address those all at a public hearing. I mean, the DEC has had this for now how long? A year, two, a year and a half? And they've done nothing, it's not that the planning board--
No, they haven't done nothing.
Well--
I think we've gotten--
No, no, I didn't say you had done anything, because the DEC apparently still hasn't rendered a decision.
I believe the engineer has gone back and forth with the DEC a number of times in the last six months.
Yeah, but there's no finality from the DEC, is there?
We've had to resubmit now because we've changed the plans.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, so, you know, if you want to insist upon a public hearing, I don't see any impediment to that, other than the fact that, you know, the opportunity for Kathy's office to review this might, you know, facilitate eventually a public hearing scheduled for a month later, but if you want to start it now, it's fine.
I'd like to start it.
All right.
I don't see a problem starting it, I mean, I think we have some plans at this point, we've been waiting for plans, and then we had some issues, and then, you know, changed the, changed the amount of uses in the building, and, you know, they, they did a couple of things that we asked at the work session, so I think we should at least get the ball rolling on it, so.
We can always hold it open if there's major issues that--
Right. We just ask that if anything should come up, that might change your mind about wanting to do the public hearing, let's get word as soon as possible, so we're not adjourning the day of the meeting, so the people who want to come are inconvenienced by coming--
I know the counsel for the other side very well now, so I will be in touch--
Roy, once the board schedules a hearing, that's it, it's going to be that day, so if you schedule for the September meeting, or the August meeting, then he's got time to mail, post notice, so that, that will be it.
That will be it. All right, with no objections, we will schedule you for the next meeting of the public hearing.
Do a motion at the owner's request to schedule a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
For August 5th?
Yes, for August 5th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
He did probably get missed.
Well, maybe my partner--
He said he wouldn't be here. Mary Jane Osato, Burke Flanagan Osato, 21 South Main Street, for the applicant, pin shitting from my partner, Gill Flanagan. It's my understanding that this application is a lot line modification application, that it was started actually before even my firm got involved, and that this board had various concerns, the primary being, or it all sort of surrounded around, that somehow the applicant, by asking for a lot line modification, was trying to get around going to the Board of Appeals for a variance. I believe that, and it's my understanding that my partner's already relayed to you, that one of the prongs of practical difficulty in the weighing and balancing test before the Board of Appeals is, and you can confirm with counsel, is, is there any other way other than asking for a variance, that you can help yourself and obviate your difficulty and get out of the situation that you're in? In this situation, our client, actually through a different entity, has control over the adjoining lot, and in fact, when I go to the Board of Appeals, a lot of times for variances, they'll ask me, is there any way that you can get a piece here, a piece there, and still have everything conforming? And my usual response is, the neighbor says, no. So in this instance, it's when, when it was discovered, and, and the discussion was had, of course, Gill and I would always say, well, is there any other way you can accomplish what you want to accomplish without going for a variance, because that's one of the prongs, and if you can, then the Board of Appeals is sort of reluctant to grant you a variance. Here, we're not trying to get around getting a variance, it's actually, since we can accomplish it and not create a nonconformity, a further nonconformity, this is the ideal way of handling the situation. By doing this lot line modification, we're not making another nonconforming lot, we're still going to end up in this seven point, you know, we're going to conform in every respect to the zoning. Yes, by transferring this, it's not that we create a nonconforming lot in, in the other instance, we are actually alleviating the need for a variance and still maintaining the buildability and variance conformity of both properties. I think under that situation, and you can speak with counsel, maybe consult with, with the ZBA counsel, we wouldn't be able to make the threshold for getting a variance. Now, obviously, if you say, we're not going to grant this lot line modification, that is ammunition for us to say, we tried this route, but practically speaking, if your reservation is because we're trying to thwart the variance process, we are not trying to thwart the variance process. We're actually trying to comply with the condition precedence that you have to have before even applying for a variance. So not to belabor it, if you have any specific questions that you'd like for me to answer, for the engineer to answer, for the client to answer, the architect, I mean, we're here. But I know that that was apparently, you were sort of saying, hmm, are we creating precedent by doing this, letting them do an end run? This is not an end run situation, this is actually what we're supposed to be doing, helping ourselves first, using the least offensive means, that is, variance is considered, well, if you can't comply, and you've tried everything, and then we'll give you, you know, we'll consider relief. This person controls a lot next door, he can help himself, he obviously needs your approval to do the modification, but, you know, it's really not an end run situation here, so.
My sense of the board's feeling was not that we thought you were trying to do an end run, it was that the variance is kind of how you address individual abnormalities, whereas the planning board is trying to establish general principles of how the village of Southampton should sort of be, be organized, and to have the planning board addressing an individual specific place by moving a lot line to create an acceptable situation is, is really, we're kind of more into the big picture of trying to create square lots and trying to keep things organized, rather than addressing individual situations like yours.
But if you balance in way what the, what the, what the code is trying to accomplish, and also not just the village standards for granting a variance, but New York State standards, as well as the court law, one of the criteria is that if you have a means of, a legal means of accomplishing, so that you don't need a variance, because that's considered special relief, and I can understand your reservation here, if, if I was creating, or not, I, it's not my property, if the client was creating another nonconforming lot, in other words, by taking from here and adding to here, I was diminishing the zoning conformity of this lot. In this instance, well, by doing this, actually, we're not creating a nonconformity in the lot we're taking away from, so it complies, if I was here to try to create these two lots, I could have divided them this way.
But what it does is it drops it down into a lower category of side yard setback, so that it actually does create a different type of--
It conforms to 7.5, Mr. Lemansky.
But if you, but if you, but you get more relief on a side yard setback, so, and, is the foundation, is this, has this been started to be built?
It is my understanding that because they had obtained, the building permit wasn't issued, but they got the ARB approval, they thought it was for it, there was a foundation, but everything's been stopped now, so it's, it's not--
And was there a building permit issued on this?
They won't issue it now because of this issue.
But was it one issued before they started the work?
I can't answer that. Would you, will you please come up and--
The packet was totally submitted, the whole packet is complete. It was supposed to be issued, and holding up some paperwork from my GC, which was submitted, and that's when it was rejected because of this problem. But everything had been gone through--
So the answer is no, they did put the, I mean, you're, we're not, all right, they had the packet in, they expected it to be issued, they jumped the gun and actually put it, but everything's been stopped, so, and in response to Mr. Lemansky's question-- been stopped, so, and the response to Mr. Lemansky's question is, no, the building permit had not been issued.
Okay.
That's correct.
It meets all the criteria for a lot line modification. It doesn't set any precedent. It complies with your zoning code, and if this board is going to say, no, so I can go to the variance, your two boards are going to have to have a discussion with counsel as to why, because I, you know, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, one, the throng of, is there any way that you can alleviate your need without getting a variance, because a variance is unique, and this board is saying, well, we don't want to do this, or we think we're creating precedent. I mean, I, I'm going to have to go to the ZBA, my only reason for going to them would be because the planning board doesn't want this. That's really...
My feeling for setting a precedent is, is if now you have the next guy that comes in and says, I can't make this side yard setback on this house that I want, so I'm putting in my foundation without a permit, and now I'm going to go to the planning board, and they did it for somebody else, so why can't they do it for me?
But you know what, this is, I can ask for lot line modifications on any lots, building or not, one of, your criteria is not to review for subdivision purposes, I don't think it's, because in this instance, these two lots, I could have rearranged these lots before even building. So it's, if I was asking for a variance to do it, I, absolutely, you would say, you know what, it's not our job to willy nilly, because you decided to build this house here and that house there, to start moving these lines around, but these two lots conform in every respect to 7.5, once I do this. I'm not creating, in fact, I'm trying to alleviate an issue that should have never happened.
It's not the 7.5 zone that's the problem, it's the, it's the setbacks.
I understand that, but it conforms...
It's not the...
It conforms to zoning.
Wait a minute, stop, no, it doesn't, it conforms to zoning, but doesn't comply with the setbacks.
The existing...
Which is in the zoning.
The, it doesn't comply now, but with a, with a modification, it will comply.
We're talking about now.
So, but I'm not creating nonconforming lots for the zone.
You're creating a nonconformity, you're alleviating a nonconformity.
By, yes, absolutely. We're using self remedy and asking for you to do it, this is what it's...
I didn't ask the consequences, I just said, it's not correct to say that it complies.
No, no, I said, after the lots are created, both properties will comply without a variance. That's what I'm saying.
Yes, because you had been granted relief by this board.
But you're not granting special relief, it's a boundary line modification. That's not considered...
You're granting relief to the side yards. The effect that it is to grant relief to the side...
No, 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 no. This is where you and I and my partner differ. You're not granting special relief. The planning board is here to grant subdivisions and boundary line modifications.
I think the issue is we differ.
Okay, so...
But my feeling is, as the lot is now, our side yard setback is X, and if we grant this lot line modification, our side yard setback actually goes down. So you're adding, you're, 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 you're taking property away from this lot so that the side yard setback will conform.
And that's considered, I am able to comply with a zoning code without a variance, okay? We are not asking you for a variance, all right?
This board doesn't have the power to grant it.
Exactly. We're asking for a boundary line modification, which you have the power to grant, and which this meets all squares of the sub, I mean, basically, it is not a variance, we're asking for a boundary line modification, it complies with the boundary line modification and subdivision regulations. If you so choose, that you're thinking that you're somehow granting special relief, you know, it's, it's, this is a legal point, and if your counsel is saying that that is what it is, I mean, I'm not going to sit here in a public forum and argue jurisprudence. I ask you to please consult with each other, I would ask that Beau Robinson speak to ZBA counsel, all right? It's a comprehensive thing, because I don't want to be between the rock and the hard place, and if you want further information, we will submit it.
I don't think we need any further information.
I think we do.
I think we need information with you discussing it, maybe with the ZBA counsel.
Yeah, but I think that also, there are other issues, I mean, I don't think any, this is the first presentation in full tonight, it needs to be given some consideration, and, you know, certainly I'll confer with Rick on this issue and report to the board.
Anybody have any other further questions to ask of Ms. Osato?
No, I, then I think...
Do you want for the drawings or anything of that nature? I mean, you know, obviously, we have, so...
We don't need them.
What's the, what's the minimum square footage of the lot in, in this zone?
7,500 square feet.
I think it's a lot, isn't it? This is a lot.
This is seven, seven point half stone, so both of them are oversized for, in total lot area, that, that's not the issue.
So is it a, is there a way you can move the lot line the other way, so that you're actually not asking for side yard relief and still keep this other lot conforming?
What do you mean, the other way?
Well, if you, what do you need, what do you need now in this, with this zone? You need a 15-foot setback?
Yeah, 40 overall.
What is it?
It's 40 overall.
And what's one side?
There's minimum and total side issues here, that's, that's, and this, this is the minimum transfer that accomplishes that benefit without impacting the buildability, you know, because the other lot, well then, we don't want to be asking for relief there when it ultimately gets built either, so...
But if you do, is there, have you explored moving the lot line the other direction to make the existing foundation conform to the setback when it's at its size or a little bit bigger than its size?
That would make the other lot extremely narrow, even more narrow than it is now, and that lot is already smaller in size than the existing lot, how does it...
He's just asking.
But, no, we have not explored it, I will explore it with, I mean, I know that they sat down with my partner Gil Flanagan as to what, by doing this, to minimize and to, because self-created hardship when we come in to build on the other lot, you'd be set, you know, not this board, but the variances, if, if you're narrowing and already smaller and less, you know, a lot that's already smaller, already not square, it, it, it has an impact, so... Not a really a practical situation. This was started without us, but I know that once it was started and they came into my partner, I don't need to relay to you how thorough he is, so although I'm pinch hitting, I got briefed on this pretty extensively, because he's very thorough. But I will relay, you know, the concerns of the board and that, but I really do think there has to be some sort of dialogue between the two board representatives, because I really, I mean, if that's the route that you choose, we're going to be having to deal with them, so, you know, we need some, some communication, so...
Okay, I mean, I think that's a good idea for you guys to get together and...
Adjourn for all purposes?
Would you like us to adjourn for all purposes until the next meeting?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn Gerald Rosengarden for all purposes until the...
August 5th?
August 5th meeting.
Happy birthday to all of us on 4th.
There you go, you too, Mary Jane.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Do we have anything in the file, Cam, from PEP 2 Holdings?
No, but last, what they noticed that they sent last week was to say that they would contact us when they had the papers, and there was no contact.
Right.
So, and that was really, so we probably wouldn't have said something.
Well, then I would suggest you make a motion to dismiss the application from the agenda.
Well, it's just a pre-submission, so we can leave that off.
Just a pre-submission to the...
Yeah, but there's no point in...
Hear more from them.
They just, they, they did not receive their plant, plans or site plans as they had planned to, and as soon as they...
So they haven't even made an application.
I actually think they almost dismissed it, because they said that they would contact us to reschedule.
Yeah, I don't think that's appropriate, just leaving it limbo like that.
Yeah, just leave it, get it out.
Motion to adjourn the agenda until we hear from them again.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes our agenda.
We have minutes.
We have minutes from the June 3rd meeting.
That was adjourned.
Just June 3rd.
Yes.
That's this one.
Yes, this one right here.
Just June 3rd.
Any comments and questions, issues with the minutes from the June 3rd meeting?
That was the last email that went out?
Yes.
Yeah.
I had...
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I have a motion to approve those minutes then.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There being no further business before the board, may I have a motion to conclude and the meeting?
I will make a motion to end this meeting.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.